All right, it's seven o'clock. We are all here as I can tell. It is the Clayton City Council meeting for November the 16th, 2021. We are going to get started right now and call the meeting to order and Janet will do the roll call.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Present.
Councilmember Juan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
I'm here.
Mayor Wolf?
I'm here too. And we are all present. Just a minute, I got something on my screen I gotta get rid of. There we go. Okay. All right, now we can move on to our meeting protocol video. Oh, it's already started. This is exciting. Get the popcorn.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the AB 361, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is also being webcast on the city of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenter staff and other speakers by name and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 PM today will be entered into the record but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Hey. Thank you, Janet. Okay, now we're going to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance as always led by Councilmember Diaz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Moving on to item number four, which is our consent calendar. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull or discuss? Oh, wait a minute, I see Raina's hand is up, so Raina, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before you take any further comments, et cetera, or action on the consent calendar, I'm going to request that we pull item 4G off the agenda entirely. So no action on the consent calendar and no action requested of the council this evening. We were just made aware today of some additional grant requirements and we're not entirely sure that we have a project aligned correctly. So we want to make sure that that's the case before we ask the council to take any further action, particularly on the RIRE grant, per capita grant. The council has already selected a project and that will stand for the time being. So with that, if we could, in whatever motion, please eliminate item 4G from the consent calendar. I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall do so. Anybody else want anything? Yes, Councilmember Juan?
I have a follow-up to that. Do we, are we in jeopardy of losing any funding due to timing? Or do we think that we're still in good shape?
We are not in jeopardy of losing funding due to timing. We are potentially in jeopardy of losing funding if we do not have an appropriate project for the characteristics of the RIRE grant. So that's, we need to do some additional work to determine if that's the case. But, so I don't have an answer to that yet, but it's not a timing issue. We do not need to take action before the end of the year. The council did authorize in a resolution some time ago the ability to apply and the state is aware that we have that authority and we just need to work on the project piece, but that does not need to be done by December.
Okay, how long do we have?
I don't know offhand when that project description needs to be fully into the state. The per capita grant project does need to be selected and we have done that already. So we have until at least early next year on the other, if we have a viable project.
Okay, cool, thanks. I had a question also on item E. This was the prepared stop sign.
Yes.
But I'm glad to see this here. This is a long time coming. I know that there's been a lot of work going on. This is the one that's connected and synchronized with the actual signal, right? Not the one that, okay, cool. That was it.
Okay.
I have just two brief questions.
Go ahead.
One on 4D, which is for Diablo Estates and the agreement for Matrix. I just wanted to ask if staff did any outreach to that neighborhood to find out if they were pleased with the work done thus far. I know that there was a timing issue for approving this contract. And if not, then if we plan to do that before it's renewed again next year.
So staff did have some outreach and discussion with a few of the neighborhood members. There were some challenges with the contractor early in the year, but we have gotten that kind of all worked out. And I think the community is feeling that we're on the upward trend with that. So we'll continue to stay in touch with them. And certainly before we renew and/or put it out, we would, we'll be in touch with the community in the April-May timeframe for their annual assessment process anyway. So we will have a check-in with them during that process. So it won't even be a year, it'll be six months.
Okay, great. And then on 4F, I know the developer is DeNova Homes and I'm curious on the name change for the improvement agreement to be with Civic Clayton LLC. Can you elaborate on that just a little bit?
I cannot elaborate on that, but I'm going to. I see Laura's got her hand raised, so I'm going to move her in. She may be able to, and maybe Dana.
Okay.
So hang on, they're coming over unless I'm having that thing where I'm just going to allow them to. Hello, slow system. Okay. So the question is the source or reasoning for the name change. Dana, I don't know if you've had conversations with DeNova about that.
No, I haven't discussed that with them, but it's not atypical for a corporation to form an LLC specific to a project. It is still the same entity. It is still DeNova Homes. That is the developer of the project.
Perfect, great. That's the main point. Thank you so much. Okay, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, assistance from the more knowledgeable folks.
Anybody else have anything they want to talk about? Pull. In the meantime, we'll go to the public comment on this. Janet, do we have anybody that would like to speak to the consent calendar?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
All right, in that case, we will close the public discussion on the consent calendar, move it back for a motion.
And I will, Diaz will move for approval minus item 4G.
First, that will be as second by Tillman, is that right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you. All right, Janet, call the vote, please.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes. And that passes. And now on to item number five, which is recognitions and presentations proclamation today declaring Dutch American Heritage Day. So I will read part of that right now. Excuse me. Whereas of, as of 1990, November 16th has been declared as Dutch American Heritage Day. And whereas on November 16th, 1776, a small American warship sailed into the harbor of Dutch island of St. Eustatius in the West Indies, only four months after the United States declared its independence from Great Britain. And whereas the American crew was delighted when the governor of the island ordered that his fort cannons be fired in a friendly salute representing the first time a foreign power had offered a salute to the flag of the United States. And whereas the welcoming salute was also a sign of respect and today it continues to symbolize the deep ties and friendship that exist between the United States and the Netherlands. Now therefore, I, Carl Wolf, Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim November 16th as Dutch American Heritage Day in Clayton, California, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. And then our next proclamation is for Human Rights Day. And I'll read part of that now. Whereas on December 10th, 1948, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and thereafter, December 10th has been observed each year as Human Rights Day. And whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was the first universal standard of achievement for all people and nations stating that all human beings have certain inherent and inalienable rights to be universally protected. And whereas on December 10th, 1949, President Truman issued the first presidential proclamation for Human Rights Day. And whereas in 1958, President Eisenhower issued the first proclamation for Human Rights Week held December 10 to 17. Now therefore, I, Carl Wolf, Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim December 10th as Human Rights Day in Clayton, California, and I encourage all citizens to learn about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. There we go. All right. All righty, now moving on to item number six, which are our reports, city manager staff report, we'll start it off.
Great, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I don't have really much of anything other than what we'll be talking about, which I'm excited on some of the items coming up. So with that, I will just turn it back over to the council for your reports and moving on.
All right, thank you. How about Peter? We start with you today.
Greetings and.
Salutations.
Salutations. I had a chance to attend the Transpac meeting on the 10th of November and I've always find that group of people well informed and doing what they can to deal with transportation issues in central Costa Rica County. We talked about specifically funding for senior and people with disabilities and how that will be distributed across the counties. That was a possibility of bringing services to Clayton. I also had a chance on the following day, Veterans Day, to attend a ceremony in Toto Santos with Councilman Diaz and Mayor Wolf and it was well put together by the city and by the veterans and I really, really appreciated it and has a great conversations with our city manager and Mayor Wolf, but also with our citizens of Clayton relative to some of the funding that we're going to be talking about tonight relative to ARPA. And I know there's a lot of people listening to see how we can give them assistance and how that's going to be doled out. So the good conversation. And lastly, having a whole bunch of conversations about the survey that's gone out on the city website on what possible sites may be in existence and/or be used as far as the upcoming housing element. I was extremely pleased that after a week of being out there, that 244 or 224 had responded and that's just in the first week. I highly encourage you, just in conversation with your neighbors and whoever you're talking to, just start filling it out because this is the first of many pieces of public participation to be involved. Because quite frankly, if you're not involved in this process and you can't complain about it later, there you are. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cloven. How about Holly today?
Thank you, Mayor Wolf. I will be brief. On the third, I attended the Mount Diablo Unified School District Superintendent and Mayor's conference or meeting with you and City Manager Schwartz. And we had a great meeting there. We also met with Transpac and CCTA. No, who did we, CCTA and what was the other group? I can't remember the other one.
County Connection.
Thank you. And we were talking a lot about how to deal with traffic around the local schools in the school district. And so they were, we were trying to brainstorm on not using the school bus system, but using the county buses to get them there. So it was a work in progress, more to come. But it was the first invitation that we've had with them to sit down at the table to discuss the issues around each of the schools in our district. That was on the third. On the ninth, I attended the anti-bias, anti-racist Subcommittee meeting to help form the goals and the norms for how that will move forward going forward with the school district. I also met with the Library Foundation that evening and they are going to have their next book sale April 1st through the 3rd. I did remind them that that is when our school, our school district's spring break starts. That was a mouthful and so that they might lose a few people if people are traveling again. They'll have another one in the summer, just like they did a one-day sale like they did this past summer. So they're aware of that. And the librarian Karen Hanson will be retiring in February. So I don't know, people have gotten to know her for all the time that she's worked here, but she will be retiring. So if you get a chance to stop by and thank her for her service. On the 15th, which was last night, I had the full committee for the anti-bias, anti-racist committee for the school district. And I've also met with our city manager a couple of times. And I've also been in conversations regarding the survey and encouraging people to fill that out. And I did get a lot of feedback from residents regarding our last conversation about the ARPA and they were very pleased that we had asked for that to move expeditiously. And I'm hoping that more of them join this evening to learn about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. How about Councilmember Juan?
Yeah, no report this time, thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Diaz?
On the third, met with Dan Keen, who is of course working on the process of getting the money distributed for the businesses and other residents concerned with the lost revenue during the COVID. But this meeting was to prepare for the upcoming evaluation that we will be doing on November 30th with the, for the city manager. Also that evening, I attended the Morgan Territory Committee Association meeting. They plan to get more involved in activities around the downtown area. In fact, they are sending some volunteers to help pick up the storage items that are in, for the decorations, the wreaths and all the other items that we use to decorate downtown this Saturday, the 20th of November. Want to thank Paul Jacobson, our IT manager. You may recall that at our last city council meeting, another great representative from the John Darr family of Clayton was recognized and Jeff, their parent, their father, requested the segment taken out and sent to him and we were able to accomplish that. And so I want to thank Paul and on behalf of Jeff and the entire John Darr family, including Jacob, who was recognized that night. On the 10th, hallelujah, got my booster shot. So I think I'm clear for a while. The 11th, attended the Veterans Day event at Toto Santo Park, put on combination with the city of Concord and the city of Clayton. And being the sole remaining veteran on our city council, it was a very wonderful day until I got home. And that's when I was, my phone and emails were lit up about the little event that took place at the quarry. I'll give a little thumbnail. I talked immediately after that, first with our police department and they had no specific information on it, but I did talk with Todd Nixon, who's the plant manager. Then I talked with Deborah Haldeman, who's the government and Public Relations Director for Semex out of Sacramento and of course Guy Houston, who is their local advocate. And they have put together a pretty comprehensive report they sent to the entire city council. But at the latter part of the meeting tonight, at the request for future agenda items, I'm going to request that, and they've agreed to help participate in a information meeting sometime in the future, future after the first of the year, to kind of give a, you know, a little bit better understanding what took place. And apparently there were some, at least one resident that I talked to over in Dana Ridge. Her residence, she thought it was the big earthquake, but, and some of the pictures and things on her walls rattled quite a bit. But apparently this was out of the norm of what, what has taken place in the past. And I tried to reassure her that we would look into it as well, the other residents that I talked with. Because I actually, after all of us, the city council went up and had a tour of the Semex operation. I went back afterwards and actually participated in one of those demolition exercises that they do to remove the rock and all that. And I have to say, I was very impressed. They have a very professional and safe group of demolition experts that do this. And I'm sure this was something out of the ordinary that took place on the 11th. More to come on that as I request the information item. Last night, attended the first art and wine committee meeting. That's coming April 23rd and 24th, 2022. So stand by for that. You'll see more information for that and requests for volunteers to help out because we don't know, quite frankly, at this point in time, what to expect in terms of population coming in. We do know that the Walnut Festival that took place several weekends ago in Walnut Creek was well attended, so much so that they probably could have used more ticket sellers and more, you know, food vendors and so forth. So we're trying to plan for that and at least make plans to make sure that we have that. Because we know, one, that we could have a huge turnout with a pent-up demand for outside activities like this. Also, we're also anticipating a modest increase in costs for the operation because of the inflation that's taking place. And in fact, we know for sure that it was reported by our person that takes care of all the permits and so forth, that the county health department is going to be increasing their costs for doing the inspections. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Okay, well, I too attended the Veterans Day commemoration in Concord. Got the chance to speak there and honor our veterans from Clayton and all veterans. And of course, like Jim said, when I returned back home, since we were there when the big blast happened, I got a lot of emails and phone calls and inquiries regarding what happened and have spoken along with our city manager to Semex. And they put out an initial statement, which we put out on social media. And then today we got a further in-depth response from them with regard to what has transpired there on November 11th. It seems to me, it seems that there was some kind of a fissure or a seam that was invisible at the time and it exploded and created a loud sonic boom-like sound which echoed through the entire valley. We'll put the statement out so people get a chance to see it. And if you have questions, you can certainly let us know. But I've been here a very long time in Clayton and this, the first time this kind of thing has happened. I know Jim mentioned that as well. And so hopefully this will be the last time we have to experience anything like this. But we'll, we'll stay on top of it. Met with the, with Holly and Raina, we went to the Diablo Unified School District meeting, as Holly said, with our fellow mayors and city managers and other council members. I met with the Holiday Tree Lighting Committee from CBCA and we will be having a modified version of the tree lighting coming up on the 4th of December and that'll take place at 5:45 in the Grove Park. I understand now we will have a children's choir, which will be nice. Still working on some other things. Of course, Santa Claus will be there, so that's the most important thing and we'll get the tree lit. So come on down to the Grove Park on Saturday, December the 4th at 5:45. Let's see what else. I attended the mayor's conference and I know we've talked about, what was talked about there. This, by the way, is United Against Hate Week running this entire week. So we're going to write in the beginning of it. And all the mayors, of course, support United Against Hate Week and we reaffirm that during the mayor's conference. Met with Malal, so Raina, several times, our city manager and the consultant with regard to Raina's review. And let's see what else. Wrote some articles for the newspapers. And in case you don't know, the governor has extended the emergency declaration with regard to COVID until March of 2022. And then finally, we wanted just to encourage you to apply for the planning commission. Raina, what is, what is the deadline for applying for that?
I believe we set the deadline at the 23rd of November. Janet can pipe in if I am wrong, but I believe we set it for the 23rd. Because we will put out the agenda right after that. She's nodding. Yes, got the day right.
Good. So please, if you, if you want to get a chance to serve the community, we do have a spot open on the planning commission. And that is my report for now. Okay, so moving on now to item number seven, which is public comments on non-agenda items. And Janet, you can let us know who is in the queue. We'll open up the public comments. You'll have three minutes to speak on anything that isn't on the agenda.
All right, as I promote Edward to panelists, you'll have three minutes to speak if you can unmute your microphone.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ed Hartley. I'm a member of the Clayton Business and Community Association, known as CBCA. CBCA is a community service organization and 501(c)(3) charity that is separate from the city of Clayton. Our website address is www.claytonca.org. Our motto is very simple, for the good of the Clayton community. CBCA is pleased to announce that our annual holiday decoration effort will be performed this Saturday, November 20, beginning at nine o'clock. Anyone wishing to help can email holidays@claytonca.org for more information and to volunteer. CBCA also supports several holiday efforts, including Adopt a Family, the VA, Christmas for Everyone, and Wreaths Across America. Information about our efforts and these programs can be found by calling 925-672-2272. As Mayor Wolf mentioned, CBCA will be holding a modified version of the annual tree lighting ceremony this Saturday, on Saturday, December 4th, at the Grove Park with music and an appearance by Santa Claus. Again, information on this annual event is available at claytonca.org. Anyone living in the 94517 ZIP code or on the border, which I believe is 94521, is eligible to be a CBCA member. You do not need to be a business owner. Our dues are $48 a year. We meet the last business Thursday of the month and we hope to get back to in-person meetings in January. What we value most is not your money, but it's giving of your time and effort to improve your community by volunteering for our events, either to pour beer, pour wine, clean up, or help organize the event. Applying for membership is easy and the form is available at claytonca.org. In addition to the 2022 Art and Wine Festival, which I believe will be our 25th, CBCA looks forward to the return of our other signature events as well, which are the barbecue cook-off in the summer, Oktoberfest, and dessert with Mrs. Claus. Finally, CBCA was a major contributor to the construction of the Gibson Family Bocce Park. CBCA also operates and maintains courts, including the running of the Clayton Bocce League and open free play and rentals. Bocce has been in full swing since May. On November 13th, we completed our 700-player summer league and we would like to congratulate Block Party for winning the summer league. Our fall league begins this Thursday and will run through the end of January into early February. Information on open free rental and league play is available at CBCA's Bocce website, which is www.claytonbocce.org. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ed. And just want to say kudos to Debbie Bruno and to AJ Chippero. We're going to help pull off the tree lighting this year in the Grove on December 4th. Okay, Janet, do we have anyone else? Okay, Janet, do we have anyone else in the, in the queue?
Mayor Wolf, at this time, I do not have any other hands raised.
Okay. All right. In that case, we will close the public comment. Bring it back for item number eight. Item number eight, we have a public hearing. Introduce and waive first reading ordinance to amend Clayton Municipal Code 1736080 and Chapter 1795 entitled Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation. So let's turn this over to Dana is here, our community development director. So hi Dana, welcome. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor Wolf and members of the city council. The item that's before you this evening is an item that you've seen before. This was initiated by the city council in May of earlier, May 4th, earlier this year. There was a request by the city council for consideration of possible amendment to the municipal code to allow growing of cannabis plants outside of a residence. Current municipal code allows for growing of cannabis inside a residence and state law as well as local law restrict the number of plants to six plants total, all of which, again, according to current municipal code, must be inside of a house. Again, the city council initiated a process to revise the zoning code regulations to allow those plants to be either indoor or outdoor. Staff went away and drafted an ordinance that aligns with what the city council advised back in May. Following the procedures and municipal code as well as state law, we took that ordinance to the planning commission for the planning commission to make a recommendation on the ordinance and the amendments that were described in the ordinance. Again, the, the ordinance itself would allow the plants up to six maximum to be grown either indoors or outdoors, or a combination of the two. The requirement that the plants be grown for exclusively personal use and not for commercial use would remain a regulation of the amended code, should the council adopt it. And then the ordinance also, as, as drafted, includes other requirements that the plants not be visible from a public right-of-way or other public space, that any structures or equipment that are used for growing the cannabis plants be installed in compliance with building code, plumbing code, electrical fire, and all other applicable codes. And that any plants that are grown outdoors are enclosed by a fence with a lockable gate. The planning commission did, as again directed by state law and local code, did review the draft ordinance and had their own public hearing, had their own deliberations. And after close of their public hearing, which was on October 26th, the planning commission made a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance as it was drafted by a vote of four to zero. So tonight's hearing is to consider the draft ordinance, the recommendation of the planning commission, as well as any other public testimony. And the city council is asked to introduce the ordinance and to make a decision about whether to adopt the ordinance at this time. If the council does make a motion to, or if the council does introduce and make a motion to adopt the ordinance, it would come back for a second reading at a future meeting. So I believe that's kind of just the gist of it. But if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time. Amanda Carn. I'm not sure I got that right. I will let her introduce herself. From BBK is also present to answer questions from council members.
Amanda, do you need to jump in?
Oh, my last name is pronounced Char, that's all, but.
Okay, good. Well, there we go. Yes, Jim, I saw your hand up.
Yeah.
We'll get back to the council for questions here.
And I understand the, the requirement that these plants be not visible from the public right-of-way. The, the, one comment or two that I received were from a resident or two immediately around or near the elementary school. And the concern that they had, and I know that the law prohibits smoking, and help me understand all this, smoking it within, what, 500 feet, 1,000 feet from a school. What they were hoping to do, and I know we can't let them public or put a sign on a public post, they were hopeful to put up maybe on their own property, some sign that says, I don't know, drug-free zone or whatever, particularly emphasizing the fact that they live immediately within that 500 feet of the elementary school. So I asked council to, you know, further explore that and let me know or explain what that, all that means and what they could or could not do.
So any signage that would be placed on a property would have to comply with sign regulations of the city's sign codes. And I, I can look that up if you give me a moment, if you want to answer right away, but.
No, 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 no. I just, they, they just, and I want to get back to them after we discuss this to let them know that, and I talked with Reyna earlier today about this. Basically, they can put the sign in their yard that complies with our sign ordinance. They can't put that sign up on a, on a public pole of some sort, telephone pole, flag pole or, excuse me, lamp pole or something like that. But they wanted to just make sure because they had concerns about potential growth of excessive number of plants in close proximity to the, to the elementary school. And that's, I'll just leave it at that. And that ultimately, assuming this moves forward, may, may become sort of a, some sort of an action item or not an action item, but a enforcement item that needs to be looked into in the future. But basically, my question is for them is, one, they could put a sign up in their own yard, but they could not post something and it has to be in compliance with our sign orders, but could not, in fact, put it up on a, on a public pole or fence. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all, Jim? Yep. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah. Can you clarify the, the exist current law around use of marijuana now? You know, Jim mentioned that you can't smoke within a certain distance of a school. I don't think that's true. At least as it pertains to your residence. I don't think there's any restriction, but can you clarify?
I'd be happy to take that one. And the Prop 64 prohibits smoking cannabis within 1,000 feet of a school, except upon the grounds of a private residence. So you're correct that the grounds of your private home would be excluded from that.
Which would include the cur, that would include the curlicet and the yard and all that.
The curlicet is a term of art that I'm not precisely aware of, but if, if the curlicet includes the private property of an individual, then yes.
It is the enclosed area that you would have an expectation of to control access and privacy.
So the front yard?
You can make the front yard curlicet if you properly secluded in a way, but typically it's the backyard and any enclosed spaces within that are adjacent to and connected to the property.
Well, if it's the backyard of a property, then yes, I would think that's included.
Okay, cool. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other clarification questions from the council? Now that we're going to open up the public hearing to the public. And Janet, do we have anyone that would like to speak to this item?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised on the side. Oh, one hand just went up. Michael, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
We can. Welcome, Michael.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Wolf. Vice Mayor Cloven, councilmembers Juan Diaz and Hill Tillman. Good to see you guys tonight. I'd like to commend you for putting forth and commending the changing of the ordinance regarding the cannabis in the city of Clayton to allow the outdoor cultivation, which aligns Clayton with other nearby cities ordinances and kind of makes them the same. As other cities have stated, it's not going to make a rise in crime rates, but to the contrary, that was reported from Pleasant Hill, the incidents actually went down. I'm certain that Clayton will have the same results. The patients that need the cannabis will now be able to cultivate their own without fear that they'll be in trouble from local authorities for having it outdoors. Cause not all of them can afford to go through the expense and risk of putting grow lights, fires. And additionally, by removing the requirement, we're not going to have those kind of issues here with fires, deaths, people getting hurt from substandard modifications to the utility systems, plumbing systems. You see that story in the news all the time currently. So thank you for taking this on and making a change.
Thank you, Michael. We appreciate your time again.
Thank you.
Janet, do we have anyone else?
We do, Mayor Wolf. There was a second, Michael Lewis. I'm going to ask that one to unmute.
Mute now. Hello, good evening. This is Jenny. Do you miss me yet?
Long time no hear.
I know, huh?
Well, welcome.
Well, I wanted to say hi Dana. I'm so happy you're here. And Jim, marijuana is not going to be a drug very soon. Federal is going to be legalized at any time right now. So it's not going to be a drug. So there's no drug. What's that? Drug-free zone thing. Anyway, the thing I wanted to say is, want to talk about marijuana is going to be global. It's growing global right now. And everybody should be able to grow cannabis on their own property outdoor, just like how we grow fruits and vegetable outdoor. And I want to thank city councils, recognize the movement and adopt the change to allow outdoor cultivation. And I hope city of Clayton will consider commercial cannabis very soon, whether it's a retail or online store, doesn't matter. You know, we should do that. It's, it's really, it's just a plant. And last I want to say is that, you know, people always say city of Clayton is labeled as a conservative town because few people that make loud noises resist to changes. They don't represent Clayton. There's a lot of people like us in Clayton that we want changes. We want a different downtown and we want a different downtown. Our downtown is dead. We need new businesses, new restaurants. We need new attraction to have people come into Clayton to shop and die like us. We always drive to Conqueror, Walnut Creek to eat, but then we just hope that one day we can eat in our own downtown. And to be honest, a, a bocce court in a skip-a-nene, just don't cut it.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, Janet, do we have anyone else?
We do. Dee, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, city council. How are you?
We're good. I see you changed your picture.
Yeah, I think it's a better picture. I just wanted to express my support for the ordinance change to allow outdoor cannabis growth. I think it just opens up a, a great opportunity for people that rely on this for medical uses or recreational uses, whatever they're fancy. But I do support it and I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Dee.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Janet, anyone else?
Our next speaker is Scott. Scott, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hey, guys. A pleasure as always speaking with you. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, we can hear you. Welcome, welcome.
All right. Hey, thank you, Michael and Jenny for your points. Honestly, as a local home inspector, I want to talk a little bit about the danger that this poses to the community. We, we've talked a lot about grow lights and how they can cause fires and all kinds of other potential dangers. Again, as a home inspector, I come across this all the time. It's not just here in Clayton. It's all across the Bay Area. People are setting systems up that just are unsafe and it, it, it's just an unneeded, you know, it's really unneeded. We don't need to be, to be bringing unsafe situations into the community. On top of that, the, Jeff, I just want to thank you for, for, for challenging Jim on, on his point about bringing up the school, the closeness to the schools issue. That, that, that's a big point. There, there's really no safety issue to this, guys. I think most of us know this. Jim, he'll, he'll come around eventually. But Jeff, I really, really want to thank you for that. That's, that's an important distinction to make. It's something I come across in my industry all the time and curlicet is something that should be better understood. It's really a privacy issue. It's really a libertarian issue in many ways when you get down to it. We also heard from a local firefighter about the, the dangers to, to, you know, the, the fire dangers to this kind of stuff in, in the, in the last meeting that we had about this. And that's, that's another important voice that we need to listen to, somebody who has real experience with these kind of issues. So again, just, just my two cents, really appreciate everybody's input and thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Scott. Janet, do we have anyone else?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
All right. And we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion, motion. Yes, Jeff?
Just to clarify, I wasn't challenging Jim in any way. It was just a normal discussion. So I would, I would move that we introduce the, the ordinance and waive the first reading. I did that out of order. Waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance.
So we have a motion, the first motion, we have a second from Cloven. Cloven, okay, I thought so. Okay, Janet, please call the vote.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes. And that passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item number nine, action items, item A. Are you waving goodbye? Amanda, goodbye. That's not, that's not item A. That was just Amanda. Adopt a resolution approving a program parameters for the Clayton Cares Program for the ARPA funding. And we'll turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm, I'm pleased and a tiny bit amazed that we are here this evening to bring this item to you. It is due in no small part to a lot of great staff work on behalf of Catherine Korsak, our new finance director and Elvia, who works with us on all of our business license activities, as well as the work of management partners in pushing this forward and being able to bring it to you this evening. So we took the direction and from the last council meeting and are here to make a presentation on the proposed program. And Dan will take the lead on it. Steve Toller will be joining us at some point and I will move him in when he gets here. But with that, I will turn it over to Dan to kick off the presentation.
Good evening, Clayton. How are you all? Good to see you. Everybody, everybody can hear me okay?
We can. Good to see you.
Great. Good to see you all. So I will bring up a PowerPoint and we will just get started. Let's see, so we can get this. Things are moving a little slowly on my end. Things are moving a little slowly on my end. All right, can everybody see my presentation?
We are seeing, you're using two screens. You might want to flip which one has your presentation on it.
Oh, I thought I had done that. All right, let's try this again. Is that working now? Very good. Thank you. Yes, two screens are necessary tonight. So as you know, we are back just a couple of weeks later to talk about the implementation step of the plan that you have preliminarily approved for the first tranche of the ARPA funds. There we go. As you'll recall, the council direction on November 2nd was specific to the first tranche of funds, which have been received by the city. You decided that, gave direction that the funds initially would be spent for small businesses and for low income residents. And these were the general parameters that we discussed at the time, seventy-five percent of the first tranche going to small business program and twenty-five percent going to a household program. And the other specifics that we talked about at that meeting was that the eligibility would start on March 3rd of 2021. So the business had to be in, 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 in operation as of that date, using the Small Business Administration criteria for defining what a small business is. And initially talking about a flat amount, a flat assistance of $5,000 for the business program. For the household program, again, twenty-five percent of the first tranche, residency same, it'd be March 3rd, 2021. They had to have been a resident as of that date. Flat amount, in this case, would be $1,500 and household income not exceeding fifty percent of the area median income as reflected on their 2020 tax return. So tonight, we're going to give you some additional details that we went right to work after the last meeting to define and research some of the particulars of how this program would work. And I'll talk first about the business loan grant program. So as I mentioned already, the criteria for eligibility for businesses, but of course would mean that they have to be a business with a primary physical address in the incorporated Clayton city limits and have an active business license that was in effect on March 3rd, 2021. We spent quite a bit of time researching the potential universe of businesses that might be applying for this program. And we did not find that particularly difficult, but it is imprecise. And we'll go into more detail on that. So one of the criteria that we recommend is that you establish an eligibility where there would be gross receipts of at least $1,000, but less than $2.5 million. And using that criteria based on the information that your city staff was able to research, business license, gross receipts, sales tax, et cetera. We believe that that defines a reasonable universe of applicants for the program. We have recommended that you structure this as a forgivable loan. And however, this would be a loan that would essentially last for just a year. It would be non-interest bearing and would be one year from the date of issuance. And it would be forgiven, provided that the business continues to be active in Clayton and demonstrates a physical presence in Clayton after that year is up. At that point, the loan would be extinguished. The purpose of this clearly, as you might guess, is to ensure that you don't give money to a business that then goes out of business. So the loan would be due and payable within sixty days at the end of the loan period if for some reason they were not able to demonstrate that they were an active, had an active business license and continue to have a physical presence in Clayton. For this program, because we know you want to move as quickly as possible to distribute funds to small businesses in Clayton, we recommend a start date for the application period of December 1st and an end date of January 31st. And it would be a first come, first served basis. That tight window gives your staff enough time to draw in the applications, but it doesn't prolong it for months and months beyond the time period, which would cost quite a bit more. So they'll need to staff up either with part-time staff or, or other or contract staff. But it won't last forever. The dispersment date would be thirty days, within, within thirty days receipt of a completed application. So in terms of the allocation of funds, we, as I said, seventy-five percent of the first tranche would be allocated net of administrative costs. So that comes up to a number of about a million dollars, just under a million dollars that would be distributed, $5,000 at a time. Again, first come, first served based on the completed application. And a moment, we will talk about that application that we have already developed. And the household grant program, little different. This would not be a loan, this would simply be a grant. The criteria would be that they have to have a home address, that live in a home address in the incorporated city limits of Clayton. And they have household income, which would be demonstrated either by a tax return or other document, other accepted documentation for 2020, which demonstrates they have less than fifty percent of the area median income. Many people in this income range do file tax returns, but many do not. So we do, we do recognize that there's possibility that there will be people who, who do not file taxes and who clearly be eligible for this program. And we have allowed for that. And we'll provide some form of documentation, perhaps a social security statement that would simply show, you know, in the case of some, that that's, that's the only income they get. It would be a one-time grant to eligible households. And household would be defined in terms of, in terms of tax return. Again, the application period would start on December 1st. This would go a little longer through the end of February, recognizing that it might be a little more difficult to get the word out to, to folks for this program. Again, dispersment within thirty days of the completed application. And the total pool of funds after deducting administrative costs and recognizing twenty-five percent of your first tranche would be $329,000. So a one-time grant of 1,500. Again, first current, first come, first served based on a completed application. We have, at the same time as we've been putting these details together, we have been putting applications together so that we're ready to roll out as quickly as possible or adapt those based on the feedback that you might give us tonight. So we have put together forms for those. There will be, in both cases, some attestation of need, which may simply be a statement that, you know, you suffered a loss due to pandemic-related causes and you swear that under oath. We will also be, in the application process, be looking for some documentation to satisfy the criteria that I just went over on the other page. And again, applications would be accepted at city hall during regular business hours. In terms of outreach, this is just a starting point, but we see a combination of both print and digital, recognizing that some people may not get the word directly from the city, but may hear about it from others who know they might be eligible. So we have listed a number of possible locations, including the library apartments, the CBCA who spoke tonight, fiscal, physical bulletin boards, and the Clayton Pioneer and your own Facebook page. When the, and this is jumping a little bit ahead, but there is a second tranche coming. It will be in the summer months. And at that time, you will have the opportunity to again, to decide how to spend those funds. You may decide based upon the success of the program that we are talking about tonight, that you want to extend that program, or you may choose to spend it in other ways that are again eligible for ARPA, remembering just for the public's benefit that not every eligible purpose that is established under ARPA is available to the city of Clayton. City infrastructure projects is certainly be one category that is available, at least within this, 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 this narrow band here. And then, of course, any additional pandemic protection efforts that the city might feel the need to take advantage of for the next time that there is. So that's our brief presentation, but it's full of detail and I, I happy to respond to any questions you might have about that. And I will try to pull the screen down here so you can see one another again. There we go.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, I see that we have a question from Councilmember Tillman.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dan. That was very helpful. And kudos to all of you guys for the yeoman's job of getting this before us tonight, because I know that you were saying that it was going to take a while and I'm very pleased to see this back before us. I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned that a household equals tax return, so I just wanted to dig into that just a little bit. So if you've got four people who are roommates, each of them can apply for themselves as long as they're over eighteen years old and meet requirements. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We discussed that, yes.
Okay, perfect. And then
In other words, they're not dependent on somebody else's tax return.
Okay. And then, oh, hi, Steve. And then for dispersment, I'm assuming we're cutting checks for everyone? Okay. Thank you, Raina. And then on page 141 out of the 160, which is, I believe, the first page of the household application. I know it was in the presentation and I know that you just gave, and I know it's further up in the document, but it doesn't list on here when someone picks this up or grabs it online, that they had to be a resident as of March 3rd of this year. And I would hope that you guys would add that. I know I spoke to Raina about that earlier today, but just wanted to be sure that didn't be, that wasn't left off. Just so no one's confused if they moved in March 4th. They don't qualify. Okay.
Mayor, my apologies. I missed that one. So thank you.
It's a draft. It's all good.
It's a draft.
And then I know that there will be people who are disappointed in the amount, because we were talking about larger amounts that could be distributed at this point, but I do understand the rationale on seeing how this plays out first in this first tranche and, and going from there. That's all I have for now and I'll come back if I have something else. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Steve and Dan.
Councilmember, Councilmember Diaz?
Yes, I too want to thank Dan and Steve for the timeliness and turning this around quickly. I also want to thank them for the brevity of the paper package that they put together. The last one I still have carrying around in the backseat of my car, but this one is much more brief and to the point. I have a question though, and I got a little bit confused, Dan, when you were talking about the criteria for a business and it's on your third page. And help me understand, I think it's the third bullet, well, it's in the, in the area of the criteria for qualification of a business. Help me understand that. I guess I got confused on what, how you were defining it.
It's just, just the right page is third bullet, the Okay. All right, let's start with the easy part. So in 2019, if they had gross receipts that were more than a million, more than a thousand and less than 2.5 million, then they're eligible. If, on the other hand, they started after December 31st, 2019. So they're essentially, then they would provide gross receipts in 2020. Again, greater than a thousand or less than 2.5.
2.5, yeah, all right. Okay, but they, obviously you've looked at the number of licensed business. I mean, that's, that's a finite number. I mean, how, how many people have or how many businesses have a license in Clayton? And what was that number somewhere around sixty-three, sixty-four, something like that?
Raina, Raina, you're muted. There's about 300 or so, I believe, from the data
Really?
From the city. Yep.
That must include home businesses, is that correct?
It could include
Yeah, home businesses, professional corporations, all of those.
Yeah, okay.
And any type of business.
Okay, but the bottom of my question, they must be, they must have been licensed by the city as of March 3rd, 2021, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure, you know, that somebody doesn't get excluded here. Yeah, quite frankly, I'm surprised there's that many, you know, licensed businesses over 300 in the, in the city that potentially could be qualifying for this. Anyway, good. Thank you. You've answered the question.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Do you have anyone else on the council? If you could stop sharing your screen so I could see everybody.
I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions.
All right, Jeff, go ahead.
On the criteria for both business and home, there's a an active period which we determined to be 3-3, 2021. So you would need to be either a resident or business license prior to that date, correct?
Yeah, that was part of the conversation we had last time.
Okay, so then the criteria for businesses is looking at a 2019 or 2020 tax return? If you start a business, 2-28, 2021, you meet the date criteria, but you won't have a tax return? So do we provide for that somehow?
Yeah, that's going to have to be one of those exceptions that are going to have to be reviewed and they would then have to provide their year-to-date receipts in 2021.
Okay, so we can, we can, we can do a reasonable something for those folks that meet the eligibility criteria, but do not have the requisite documentation for the other
Estimated tax payments. If they show proof of estimated tax payments, I might do that.
Okay. But then that's a case by case.
Yes.
Okay. And then for the residency one, I forget what the criteria was as well. It was a date, but then there was also a scenario where you can meet the residency requirement. But then there's a conflict with one of the others. I have to look at it. Came to mind when I looked at it, but now I don't recall off the top of my head. Oh, yeah, a tax return as well. So I guess that, that'll be a case by case as well.
Yeah, against tax return or other accepted documentation, knowing that some may not have even qualified to have to file a tax return.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Thanks. And then, you know, one of the criteria that we have for the loan on the business side was after one year, you need to meet, I think there's two criteria, and if not, then the loan becomes payable, right? Something like that. So are, are we're not, we're not, we're not securing this loan in any way, from my understanding? And we don't, and if someone doesn't meet the criteria, like they go out of business or they move to Venezuela. Do we intend to pursue and try to recoup these funds? I imagine we're not going to go through the collection process, right?
I would describe it as a gentle process to attempt to recoup. I mean, yes, we will absolutely attempt to recoup, but we're not going to, you know, hire a collections agency to go after, et cetera, et cetera. We absolutely want to make sure that, you know, folks are incentivized to stay in business and stay in business in Clayton for us. And we'll, we'll pursue reimbursement, but you know, this isn't a loan shark organization, so I don't think we'll be going down that path.
Okay, that, that was a little unclear to me, but I guess the way that I would, I would say that it would be extremely unlikely we would pursue collections for people. Like, it's just, it's not our business and it's not something that I don't know. I just don't think that it's realistic to expect collections, but you tell me, like, do you think that's an avenue that we'd go down?
Well, it, it depends on whether you're, I mean, can you clarify what you mean by collections? If my sending a letter saying, hey, you really need to pay us back because you don't meet these criteria, I view that as If my sending a letter saying, hey, you really need to pay us back because you don't meet these criteria, I view that as a collection effort, but that's not like a-
No, I don't count that.
Okay, then the answer is no.
Okay, cool. That's, that's what I would expect. It's just, you know, that juice, that juice is not worth the squeeze. Okay, then we talked about income on the tax return, but I assume that the previous answer of case by case would also hold, but you know, many businesses could be in a loss position in the tax years that are available. And so when we're talking about net income of 1,000, between 1,000 and 2.5 million, you know, you could, a lot of businesses will be in a negative or, you know, a lost position as well, right? So I'm assuming that we would accommodate for that on a case by case as well.
Councilmember, let me make sure we understand. This is, it's gross receipts. In other words-
Oh, it's gross receipts. Oh, I thought you said net income. My bad. Oh, I read that wrong. My mistake. Well. All right then. Okay. And then, oh yeah, the other thing, why are we doing it first come, first served? Is that, that wasn't something that we discussed last time. So I'm wondering, is there, what's the motivation for that?
Well, you, you have potentially 300 businesses and 400 residents that could conceivably apply, and that's an uncertain number. I mean, we, we don't know how many necessarily, but I mean, we have a, we have a universe of business licenses, for example, but you could have other numbers. And we just felt that in order to protect the city from the possibility that you receive more applications than you have funds dedicated, you need to, you need to have a system of cutting it off. So that's the end date for the application period. But also that you provide some order to it, and the best priority order would be first in, first dispersed and until funds are exhausted. That doesn't mean that the second time, the second tranche comes through, if you were oversubscribed, you would have the opportunity to come back. It would be six months later perhaps, but you could come back and, and address those people who weren't able to receive funds the first time, but that's a decision that will come later. But that was the logic.
Okay. The other piece that I would add to that is there was, we heard a very significant desire from the council to get money out as quickly as possible. If we needed to size it based on the number of applicants against the total pool, then we needed to hold a full sort of application period and then do the math, you know, and figure out what the grant amount was. That would delay getting money out the door. So this was creating a kind of a, a medium-sized, medium-level program where we can start to handle things on a rolling basis. And if we launch the program December 1st, some of those checks will go out before the end of the calendar year. If we did it on the basis of saying, okay, well, we're waiting to see how many businesses apply and we need to probably give them at least 30 days and then it, you know, we're easily into mid-January before any of those checks. So that is the other rationale behind the recommendation that we do this first tranche on a flat fee, flat amount, not tiered, simple process and first come, first serve. It's really trying to focus in on casting that wide net and not creating a program that would have sort of any administrative impediments to being able to get some of that funding out in the community in this first round as quickly as possible.
Okay, no, that's helpful. I mean, I guess, you know, I do appreciate the speed. I, I think you know, my, my only concern with that is you have the potential to, you have the potential where eligible folks may be excluded due to, you know, the speed of response. Let's say that you have a high interest and then in the first round, and then they're not, they don't meet the cutoff, and then you have a high interest in the second round and you don't meet the cutoff, then you're kind of at zero. And so that would be problematic, I think.
But I don't think we would necessarily recommend the same process or criteria for the second round, particularly if we saw oversubscription in the first round and demand beyond the numbers that we could accommodate. I think that second round, we have time to then develop the criteria that will allow us to do that sort of more refined targeting against what we learn in the first round. So I think that's really, I would not anticipate that we would do a second round that exactly mimic the first round for some of those very reasons.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, you know, there is the potential, I mean, I guess it depends on what you're trying to guard against. You have a, you have a speed criteria. You know, there's a speed, an interest in timeliness, but then you also have the potential for someone or, you know, an eligible recipient to get zero. And so I'm wondering which one of those I would rather avoid the most rather than which one I want the most. And I would, I would think if we have a case where someone is eligible but unable because they did not meet the first come, first served criteria, I would, I think that's bad, but the time is, is not great either. So I don't know. Is, we could, you know, the way that you could address some of this, some of the timeliness is to shorten the application period and then do a distribution not to exceed the flat amount with the prorata allocation based on the total number of participants. You know, that is a way that you could somewhat satisfy both. And so you would have no person eligible that submits in time. They would, no, no one would receive nothing. And then if you're oversubscribed, you would prorata, you know, decline the amount. And then you would still be able to do it timely. If you're talking 30 days, 30-day dispersing day within receipt, you know, you could shorten your application period. And, and you almost achieve the same thing. With the exception of those that would submit within the first two weeks of the, of the program as proposed. So I don't know that. I don't know. I don't know if there's any, any thoughts around that.
Could you not move the people that missed the deadline or are eligible to the head of the class for the second tranche?
You could, but I don't know when that's going to be. Or if we're going to wait till we receive funds, it's going to be what, June?
July.
July. You know, I don't want to tell someone that, you know, you were on vacation for a week and all the money got distributed, so out of luck, so July, come back then. That would, I'd feel bad.
Yeah, but the same could happen if they're on vacation now between now and the end of December. And anyway, and then they're still out of luck, right? Because we're going to base it on who applied during that timeframe. So the same scenario.
Yeah, but you, I mean, the scenario is, well, I don't know, I guess it just depends on where you weigh, what's more likely. Either the total funds get consumed very quickly, let's say within a week, or, you know, someone out during that time, but if you give some, if you have the period open for two weeks and you just hold it for two or even three, and say, that's it, we're cutting it off then, and everyone who did it gets it, and that's it, you know, no matter what, if you're eligible and you submit within time, you will get a portion. So that's a way.
I just want to, I just want to reiterate, we put a lot of effort into trying to accurately predict the number of eligibles, particularly on the business side. It was, it was easier because we have business license information and that's one of the criteria. So we're fairly confident that those, that number is, is right, and we are unlikely to get oversubscribed. On the household as well, just looking at the census data for your community and the numbers there, something would have to be dramatically off for us to have over, to undershoot that number that much. So I, I think that while there is that possibility, and we've, we've said that, that it is imprecise, we don't really think that that's likely to happen. But we did want to build into protection case it did happen. And if it does, then the council will have an opportunity to address that later, but there's there's a good likelihood that these numbers are, are right or close enough that most people who are eligible will have the opportunity. Could there be people who don't, who miss out? Sure, but we don't think many will if we do a good job of getting the bird out.
The other constraint to try to develop this program is you've got a limited staff, and so how can we make it so that it's a program that gets money out the door, that helps these businesses, that improves the economy in Clayton, but that's also able to be administered effectively by, by your staff. So there's a lot of, lot of balancing acts that are having to be done here. I'm sorry, Councilmember Cloven, I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm really, really looking forward to seeing what the response is from our business community. We've got it predicted right now that two out of three businesses will apply and receive funds from this. I know that I'm one of those businesses. My business is one of those businesses that has a, a license, a city business license, and I will not be applying it for it. And so I, I just know that there will be several businesses that were not impacted by COVID, but you'll be kind of curious to see the numbers that actually do based on our, how we, how we put this out there. It'll be good information for how we're supporting our business community in Clayton. That's what I'm really looking forward to. And so I'm glad the way the program's being rolled out right now to get it out as quickly as possible. I also want to acknowledge those small businesses that are going to have additional need beyond the $5,000 which we are initially providing. And I'm hoping that there is some type of metric to be able to evaluate some higher distribution based on additional criteria which we've yet to develop in the second tranche.
And you know, as part of, to that point, if I may, there, there is criteria in the legislation and the reporting and compliance guidelines where we're going to be proposing and assisting staff. Let me, let me change up. We're going to be providing administrative capacity and, and reporting requirements that will include some of that evidence-based work of, you know, what are the, what, what was the benefit of, of what was received? And then how can these funds for the second tranche help your, your city and your community even greater? So, yeah.
I have just one more thought too. Item number seven. These numbers are wrong. Hey, Steve, it's a draft, but it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8 on the business application. So item number seven, which could be five. It reads that the applicant has not and will not apply for or receive any other loan through or under this program. So if there are 300 business licenses, I'm, I'm assuming we've deducted then those that have additional licenses, and I'm thinking of people who might even have a seat in a shop because they might provide services and they also have another business on the side. Have we put that into the calculation as well?
Yeah, the intent here was to make sure that we didn't get double dipping. That's really what, I had them number five slash seven, just trying to address.
Okay.
But in that same vein, is that basically limiting them for the possibility of additional funding should funds be available in remaining from this first tranche or in, coming from the second tranche?
No, it was under the, the, when we can be more clear on this, but that was what that concept of under this programming, that's this program here, they can't get another loan out of this program, the first tranche.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we go to the public? All right, we shall go to the public. Let's open up the public comment on this. Janet, please let me know if anybody raises their hand. We'd like to speak to this item.
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised on this item. Oh, one just went up. Larry, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hey, guys. Can you hear me? Well, I, I appreciate the demonstration of where you guys got today. I, I'm a little confused that I wish we would have had a better outlook on the total amount of businesses two weeks ago. To go from a number of 60 to 64 to 300, I was assuming there was more businesses than 64 in the city of Clayton. I think my worry is, is that like Peter had addressed. For me as a business owner, I was under the assumption that the, the disaster money would be used for businesses that were servicing the city of Clayton. And there is a lot of businesses outside of that. So I would hope that there's going to be a way to kind of picket that where I am worried that that could be a problem. I'm happy that you've gotten to this point. I do hope that the second tranche will be a little different. And the only reason I bring this up and I said this to you guys before, you know, beggars can't be choosers. But for me as a small business, and I'm, I'm an independent contractor along with the people that work with me. So as a business owner, for the entire scale of my business, I took a major hit during the time of COVID. So now if I look at an independent contractor that works for me, they did not suffer that loss. So that's where it makes it hard for me. So I'm thankful that you've gotten to this point and you guys do have some money and money coming in. But I, I hope we just set some standards, you know, like Peter said, and if that's even, even a possibility, because I would be worried that, you know, we always want to believe that people are honest. But I do believe people will take advantage of that. And that's really all I wanted to say, and I hope everyone's doing well and I appreciate your time. So we'll just keep moving forward and see where things go. I appreciate your time, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate your chiming in. Janet, do we have anyone else?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
All right, give her a second or two, just in case. Right. All right, then we will close the public comment on this and bring it back to council for further discussion and/or motion.
Is there a way that we could make it more targeted, like? I, I don't know how to ask this question in a, in a good way. I, I think, you know, we have to have the criteria. I recognize that we have to have some objective criteria. And the criteria that we've established here does meet that, but it, it is fairly broad. I mean, at 300 businesses. And what did we say? About a million dollars, right? Give or take? So was that two? At 5,000 each? That 200 businesses, right? Two-thirds? Give or take? Yeah, I don't know. Like, I don't know if you can do a haircut on the, on the population somehow to cut out Peter's business. And
No, no, and that's exactly the point, Jeff. I mean, my business doesn't serve Clayton residents, even though I'm licensed here in Clayton. And that, that, that was the reason why I wouldn't apply for it. So I think to Larry's point, giving priority to those businesses that, that serve Clayton, not just operating, pay taxes, business license licenses here, but actually serve Claytonians and so that they're successful in Clayton is the ones that I'd like to give priority to. And I don't, I think there's a lot of business licenses that here that don't do that, you know, they pay the $700 a year or whatever their fee is, but that's it. It, no, but it doesn't otherwise serve Clayton. So I'm just trying to give priority to those people who we want to actually support in our town that serve our people. And I might, this program doesn't do it, but that's why I was, I was pressing on the second tranche is to really give the value and additional funds in that way. And I, that's something to consider that as we, as we look at this.
We don't need to wait till the second tranche. We have the first one right here.
But how do you know, how do you know what businesses are like yours, Peter, that don't serve Clayton and just carry a business license here?
That, I don't know how the dynamics are, are kept in, within our city treasurer or our city staff, but I mean, there, there are licensed businesses here that don't serve Clayton.
And my concern would be that if we, if we
Well, I, I would, yeah.
If we bogged us down in the first tranche, then, I mean, we're going to learn a lot from this first one anyway.
Well, maybe that's a question. Maybe that's a question.
People like learning anything for quite a while.
I'm sorry. Maybe it's a question on the questionnaire is, do you serve Clayton, Clayton, Clayton citizens?
Maybe it could be that simple. I don't know.
I, I would not characterize it as serving Clayton. I, I feel like that's, yeah. I, I, yeah, it's, I think you get into some, some weirdness there. But yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I can't think of a reasonable criteria that would be objective to say that also meets our other our other goals. I'm, I'm not sure. I, I was hoping that maybe our, our advisors here may have suggestions in that, in that vein. But that's, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Of course.
Yes, you could ask a question, you know, or an attestation statement. I serve businesses or people that are located in the city of Clayton. That could be one. businesses or people that are located in the city of Clayton. That could be one of the ways you do it. And you're just doing it based on attestation. The other way gets a little much more complex where along with your submitting your tax returns, submit a list of your customers and their addresses. And you don't want to go into that, right?
There you go.
I mean, that would be the ultimate way to do that, right? This is, it's over. Another way you do it, but this is going to then exclude some other businesses is that you have to have a physical store, bricks and mortar location in Clayton. Because then that would have the opportunity to serve people here, but you're going to now exclude businesses and nonprofits perhaps that, that may not have that physical store location that people come to. Um, and so there's, yeah, the public policy, isn't it fun?
Would you include, would you include a daycare, uh, things like that, people in people's homes? You're talking about brick and mortar or?
Yeah, it would, you know, well, yeah.
It's a great example. What, what is a daycare center if it's not a physical place where children would be tended to? So they have a physical presence. They are presumably serving residents of Clayton. Yes, that would be a business that would qualify.
But a home daycare could do the same thing.
Well, I think that would, that would, yeah, I think you're saying that home daycares would meet that physical presence criteria.
Have to have a business license, have to have at least a thousand dollars in gross receipts, but that's probably the case. For a substantial, you know, even a substantial, a smaller home uh daycare would certainly meet that criteria.
So then it makes sense then for this first tranche since, since this is a draft and we can change it now to have it be a physical presence storefront, home, et cetera, with a business license for this first tranche to be eligible. And then um we, the key is to still get this done in a timely manner without having to to push this out until next year. And I, I.
Who, what does that pop? Yeah, what happens to your population then?
Right. That's what I was just gonna say. I, I wish we knew off the top of our head how many businesses that really hits. Um, and what that changes the amount to.
Well, it's difficult to say. We, again, we're, right now, we're assuming two and three businesses would apply for this. And we, we just, we don't have the data to figure out how many businesses actually are local and serving Claytonians.
And when we talk, we talk business, are we talking about nonprofits as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
If they have a business license, right?
Right. Well, let's just. So where, where are we on this with regard to crafting this first go around here?
I like the idea of, of just adding additional criteria on this draft, changing the numbers and then adding this additional attestation that they serve Clayton businesses unless somebody knows before we make a, a better way of determining which businesses those really are.
You can say serve Clayton citizens or businesses.
What, how would you define serve?
Yeah, because I mean, you're right, because like a dentist office, for instance, would serve people from Clayton and or Concord and or Boulder Creek or.
I mean, I feel like serve is a.
Benefiting?
Any, any of those things that are somewhat subjective are, you know, could be problematic. Like the physical presence criteria is not subjective. That's, that's very, you know, um, easily defined, easily definable. Um, serving is not.
Oh, Raina's got her hand up. I think she has the answer.
No, Raina has another question. Um, the, um, the, the physical address, we already required that the business have a Clayton address. So there is, you know, if the person runs a consulting business out of their home, they have a physical location in Clayton and they may or may not serve Clayton residents, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not sure. So the brick and mortar is a little less.
Maybe.
Effective.
Yeah, open to the public, open to the public with a physical presence.
Oh, okay. Open to the public does start to get to that because that was my concern as we were starting to get into this like the consulting side that, you know, or an IT person who just does I, but do you? It's a tough one.
There are many home-based businesses um that were highly impacted by uh COVID. Um, I don't know whether they have ba- business licenses that they were selling some type of, of product through a multi-level program or not is they're, they're out because they wouldn't have license, business license locally, correct? So, but, but there are.
It could happen, this is.
I mean, but those, those would be the example of somebody who doesn't necessarily have brick and mortar, but might be impacted. So I don't want to exclude people too, but if, I just want to make sure we're, we're capturing the, the people that are working in here locally. And not having a consulting business that's outside of Clayton, like mine.
Too slippery to me if, if we start delineating because you do, you have people who are landscaping businesses. They don't just serve Claytonians, right? They're, they can go outside of Clayton and still have a physical presence here and outside, around the Bay Area. So how do you delineate? Correct. It's too difficult to.
Yeah, because, because the upside, the upside of narrowing the criteria is that you could then increase the dollars.
Correct.
So, you know, there, there's a, there's a benefit there. Um, I just, I just don't know what a good way to do that is.
Well, we're not going to be able to please everybody, no matter what we determine tonight. And I think with our last, of, of staff last meeting, which was the expediency and making sure that this can be um distributed before the end of the year, they've developed that. And I appreciate Larry giving his input and speaking out about the independent contractors, et cetera. That's, that was actually a concern of mine because I do know that they, if the salons were closed down, they weren't able to work, right? So yes, the business. I'm sorry?
There was EDD though, for, for those.
Sure, for all of them, sure. Um, but if that's the case, then we get into the, the PPP that the businesses could have applied for as well, right? So then, then why are we giving out money to anyone? I think the point was help our businesses um with something. So
I, yeah, this, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I would rather move forward with what we've decided now. Um, insert language that has them attest to the fact that they are open to the public, if that's the, the verbiage that we want to use. Um, and have some type of storefront presence, et cetera, or, or brick and mortar presence. Um, and I think we just have to see what happens with this first tranche and make adjustments for the next one. Otherwise, we're not going to get anywhere between now and the end of the year and no money's going to get distributed.
Yeah, another great, well, okay, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna um discount what you just said because that's cool. But another thing, if you, you know, going back to my, you know, seemingly unpopular idea about doing a, a definite, a smaller period and having a pro rata share, the amount could be significantly larger because what you can do is you could say we will distribute $1 million proportionally up to like $25,000 for, and it will go proportionally to the number of people who apply. If you have less people apply, you narrow the criteria, you can distribute more. You can, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a tool, right? That's a lever um to, to have that flex so that it's a little more flex. But that's, I don't know.
No, I mean, why do we have to be hard and fast on the number?
Because you were going first come, first served.
No, I, I, I'm kind of going your direction with regard to, I mean, uh, I, I guess I didn't ask it properly, but it seems to me like uh i- if, if it was a smaller pool, there shouldn't be a hard and fast number.
Well, yeah, it depends on how big your pool is. I mean, if you're full of 50 people and you're gonna give, you know, a million bucks, it's a lot more different.
Right.
But how, I, I think that's when we need to look to staff and our, and management partners to ask about the timing of implementing all this. Um, is that feasible? And now I'm looking at the experts, experts for their opinion.
Well, any, any additional criteria that you apply that would require further analysis of eligibility? And particularly if you are gonna hold it, that will open for a period before you decide how much people are gonna get, will, it will slow down the distribution of funds, no question. You will, you will, you will have to wait until the application period is completed, then do the analysis, then do the numbers and then distribute the funds. And that's, that's not likely to happen in the 30 days. I think it might be less likely to happen even in the 60 days that we, we had proposed.
But those, those numbers would carry over to uh the second tranche, right?
If you didn't distribute all the funds.
Right.
Uh, if, well, yes, yes. If you just took a, took a chunk of it, yes, yes.
So if only two people applied, we would be sitting on a lot more money.
Right, it would incrementally be larger from.
Right.
June or July or whatever it is.
Right.
I mean.
Well, that means satisfy, I'm sorry, Raina, go ahead.
From a timing perspective, just, you know, if we were going to do a, a fixed timeframe for the applications to figure out what the denominator is um for the program. You know, realistically, we wouldn't start processing applications till the first week in January. And so um money would probably be out the end of January um or a little bit later, depending on um, you know, the, the volume of applications. Um, and, and so nothing would, would go out really prior to that where um if we do the first come, first served, that again, the goal that we heard was get that funding out there. Um, so I just wanna kind of put the expectation out there about what the timeframe is and um, you know, kind of the additional work uh uh beyond, uh beyond that. So.
But what, what is it? What's the timeframe now in the resolution uh to get money out?
So if someone applied December 2nd, they would likely get money before the end of the calendar year. Or they, if they put out money in the second week in December, then they likely get funding the first week in January, some approximately.
So a roll. To get there quickly.
It's rolling, correct.
I'm sorry, Jeff, you said something there.
I was saying it's like a rolling time window.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, you know, when we discussed this two weeks ago, the main criteria for us and that we gave to uh management partners was uh expedience. Uh, we heard it from the public. Uh, I know I, I had uh coffee with, with Larry and, and we talked about that. And, and I know there are more funds coming and maybe it's best that we learn from what we do at this particular time. Um, but getting the, getting the funds to, in people's hands right now, I think we may be uh best to stay true to what we discussed a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's fine. Did we want to do more uh narrow, narrow uh, more language to narrow the criteria or?
Is the attestation to doing business locally?
I like adding.
That's nice. Fine, fine to me. How does, Raina, how does that change the resolution tonight?
So um what I heard was language that we were asking them to attest that they have a physical location in Clayton and that they are open to the public. I believe that's the sort of place we landed on how to get to that piece of it. Um, and uh for the resolution, I don't believe it's.
No impact on the resolution.
No impact on the resolution. We, obviously that we're, we're meeting tomorrow to talk about um all of the other pieces of it that aren't.
Drowning the eyes and, and that, but, but the resolution can be uh voted on.
Uh, if that is the council's um di- direction, as long as we're clear that the rest of the program components either stay the same or we understand um if they're, if they're changing. I will also point out, um although public comment has closed, you did have someone who has raised their hand now. It's just so you can address whether or not you, the council wishes to take any additional public comment.
But can we?
Somebody?
Um, for open to the public, um maybe different, slightly different language because like a home daycare is not open to the public per se, but they do see clients, customers or engage in business, you know, in, within the city. I, I don't know. I'm just.
No, you're right. I mean, there's music teachers and uh.
Yeah, they're not necessarily open to the public. Like I do, if you do business in your house, it's not like people can come to your house and come take a tour. Like, like.
Don't make me laugh because that wasn't funny, but it kind of made me giggle.
I mean, it's, it's true. I, if I was, uh, if that was my business, I would not characterize it as open to the public. And I want to make sure that those folks know that they are eligible. So, you know, the right, crafting the right language to communicate that, I think, is good. I don't know. I'm trying, I'm thinking like or like, you know, conduct business within the physical con- I, I don't know, something like, nah, something like that.
Just an idea that I want to throw into the mix. Uh, you might suggest a business that has a physical location uh as reflected on their business license where transaction with, transactions with.
Customers?
Residents of Clayton take place. So in other words, it would exclude, I would exclude just one example. It would exclude a contractor who does not have people come to his home because that's not where the business transacts. The business transacts wherever he's building something or the landscaper who transacts his business at locations, uh, some of which may be in Clayton, others, but a, a music teacher, a home daycare, perhaps a tax consultant who works out of his home and.
Meets clients.
Meets clients at his home. Um, you know, uh, an insurance agent who's on their own and in transacts at their home. But if they did not transact within the physical.
Yeah, language, language that reflects that is, yeah, language that reflects that good.
I, I don't, I, um, I would say that I don't think it's just transacts with Clayton residents because we do also want visitors to come to Clayton. So. And people work in Clayton and don't necessarily live in Clayton and we want to support them. So i- it, this is how we ended up with the recommendation on the first this program being simple.
We're going back down the rabbit.
Yes.
Around in circles.
I just thought I would put a plug in there for the original.
Well, certainly, certainly we'll want the language, at least the way we're hearing it tonight. We want language about being have a physical location in Clayton.
Well, that was always the case, right?
But they have to get to have a business license.
Yeah. So.
But the rest of it is so ambiguous. Uh, you know, you got three, three Claytonians uh and then the rest of your business is from Concord. I mean.
I think if they're coming here, that's fine.
Yeah, if they're coming, you're right. If they're coming here, you're, you're correct. You're correct.
Transact business from the Clayton business location?
Within Clayton borders. Like, doesn't, it's not excluding others, but you at least.
Yeah, I, that's good.
Clayton borders.
Okay. Transacts business within the Clayton borders.
How about this? No, this is the, this is the better term. Services rendered or goods provided within services rendered, goods provided within the city, within, within the, at the business location.
Yeah, that, that sounds better.
But at the business location, I don't know why that bothers me.
Oh, yeah.
Notary goes to somebody's house and they don't come to them and then you've just excluded them. And I get.
That's the same as lan- landscapers and.
Within the city.
At their physical location, which I don't like that little last piece at it. Otherwise, you said.
Services rendered or goods provided.
Within the city.
Okay, so that part's good.
Right.
Within the city.
Within the city.
Yeah, services rendered, good provided is, is, I should have, that's what I was thinking of before. Okay, that's, I use that term a lot.
Okay, so I'm hearing.
We're close there.
We're gonna make technical corrections that were identified. We're going to add language around services rendered or goods provided within the city.
Of Clayton.
Of Clayton. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um.
Not exclusively, but at least partially within the city of Clayton.
Yeah. And corrections and none of that affects the resolution directly. And we're gonna do, we're gonna, we're back to first come, first served?
It's the speediest.
It, it's, yeah, you're, it's, it's the most expedient way to do things, which is kind of what we agreed upon two weeks ago.
I mean, if we have a very low take rate at this dollar amount, maybe we can like, do, you know, two point O before the second tranche.
Great.
Right?
That would be, that would be, that would be a solution, that would be an interesting solution.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the resolution. And you'll change the application, et cetera, and all of that, right? Okay, perfect. So then I make a motion to approve the, the resolution. For the ARPA funds. As is.
We have a motion by Tillman, do we have a second? And Peter's hand is up by Cloven, so Janet. You can call the vote, please.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Aye.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes, okay, well, we got, we got that done. Good work, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, thanks, management partners.
Yes, huge thanks to management partners, and as well as the rest of the staff in the city who, who worked on this. It was a major team effort.
It was definitely a major team effort. Your city staff really came through with, particularly on the research on all those business questions. Which we, we could not have done without them, so. And the team behind us, Steve and I don't do all this work here, we have people behind us that do a lot of great work too.
Thank you, I know the Claytonians will be, will be happy to have this money coming in quickly. So thanks a lot, and we will move on now to, uh, action item B. Resolution of the City Council, Clayton electing comes subject to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And establish bidding procedures in accordance with the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And our city manager will take this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and this will be somewhat less invigorating potentially than the last item. But very important for administrative functioning for the city. Just briefly, the item in front of you makes a recommendation to update a portion of our purchasing policies. Specifically related to public works projects. And other changes will likely be coming to the council in January related to our purchasing policy, which is quite old. And in need of update, but this particular piece is one of the most significant restrictions. On efficient business for us and has a, if you will, ready-made solution. In a program identified or created by the state called the Uniform Public Cost Accounting Act. Which is a process that allows for jurisdictions such as Clayton General Law Cities. To opt into this program and defines public works projects at certain levels. And sets out what the requirements are in terms of procurement processes for those different levels of projects. It defines three levels of projects, small up to sixty thousand, medium size between sixty and two hundred thousand. And large above two hundred thousand. The primary features of the act are to put in place fairly specific requirements regarding informal bidding. And formal bidding for the sixty to two hundred thousand and the above two hundred thousand dollar sized projects. Up to sixty thousand dollars, it allows a more flexible process and not current this, what we currently have, which is above five thousand dollars. We are essentially in a formal bid situation. For projects that are that small, going through a bid process is an administratively burdensome process for what limited staff we have. And it is for those small projects, not at all interesting to contractors, quite frankly. To go through a bid process for something that might be six thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, et cetera. So we often have trouble getting contractors who want to do this work or will commit to do this work, because they are small projects. But they still need to go through a more formal process. So if the city opts into the act, it, it has two components, there's a resolution opting into the act. And then the ordinance sets out these requirements for the. The, the bidding requirements, the primary difference between the small and medium, the medium and large projects. Are how much advertising and where that advertising happens for bids, it's all very prescriptive in the law. And so the city would be following those requirements for those projects. But this would allow us to be both more responsive, it's more cost-effective. And it will get us likely a better response from contractors as we're trying to work on these. You know, sort of smaller public works projects, for example, if we need to. Replace some striping in the city, right? We don't have striping equipment, it's not something we can do in-house. But it's very hard to get someone to come in. The city can then, for these smaller contracts. Get quotes, negotiate, put in place essentially on-call agreements. And then we have relationships with the contractors where we can say, yes, you know, we are looking to. Get this work done and we can get it done without then having to go through a, a more significant. Bidding process. The recommendation in the resolution and ordinance also provides for. Aligning the city manager's signature authority with the small projects, so just for the public work side. It aligns it with the sixty thousand dollar projects. All other purchasing would still fall under our existing purchasing guidelines. And we will have further conversation about that in January. When we bring back those, those other components. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions regarding the item. And look forward to hopefully moving us to some additional flexibility. And ability to be responsive with respect to these contracts.
Thank you, Raina. Let's bring it back to council for questions, clarifications. There we go, okay, we have a hand up, Jeff.
Is it gonna, is it gonna cost more than sixty thousand dollars to replace the street pole that was hit at the east end of town knocking out our camera?
Um, the pole, A, don't know yet, B, waiting to figure out how much the cameras are gonna cost as well. So that's a goods and services question.
Yeah, but we're blind at that intersection until it gets re- erected.
Yes, we, we'll, we'll get that figured out as quickly as possible, but.
Was that a vehicle collision?
Falls here.
Yeah, what actually happened there?
Uh, somebody drove into a streetlight pole at a reasonable rate of speed. And sheared it off and dumped all of the camera and other equipment off of it onto the ground at great force.
Are we?
And she fell asleep at the wheel and was not injured, but I, I find that real fascinating.
Do we subrogate that claim against this? Perpetrator?
We will pursue all avenues of recouping our costs. And we're working with MPA as well on making sure that we, you know, get assistance in going after. The insurance coverage from the driver that caused the damage.
Did we get it on camera? No, I'm kidding, all right, so.
No, but I have photographs of it, if you want to see.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, I went over and took photographs of it.
Oh.
Not when it was happening, I would point out.
No, 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 after.
Backup job as a paparazzi. All right, so we will open this up to a public comment now and see if anybody would like to speak to this item. Janet?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, and we will close public comment on this, bring it back to council for, for the discussion or a motion.
Move approval, Jim Diaz.
Jim Diaz. Second by Tillman.
And Mayor Wolf to just clarify.
Yes, sorry.
That was adopting the resolution in the packet and waving first reading and introducing the ordinance.
Jim?
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
And if I may further clarify, because it's an ordinance, it needs to come back for a second reading. It will be brought back on consent on December seventh, so you will see it again, as with the other ordinance that you approved this evening. So just FYI.
Thank you. All right, Janet, it's all yours for the vote.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Aye.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Thank you all, okay, item number ten, close, close session, we have none. Item eleven, council items limited, council requests for future directives or future meetings.
Yes.
Ty, yes, Jim?
Yeah, I, I want to just reiterate the, the fact that I believe we need to have an informational meeting at some time. After the first of the year with the SEMEX people to help explain. With less technical detail that they put together in that memo. And, and give us a practical. Example, or not example, but rationale of what happened and how they are. Assuring that this type of event will be eliminated in the future.
Thank you, and Holly?
Yep, I just have one briefly, I'd like to have staff consult possibly with Walnut Creek, who just passed on November second. An e-cigarette ban, and that was something that was brought to us at our superintendent and Mount Diablo School District Mayor's. Committee meeting that President Conde asked different cities to adopt. So if we can have staff see what Walnut Creek adopted, I know that Kevin Wilk said that he had a pretty. Large package that they had put together so that you don't have to recreate the will that's already done, and he had worked with Sharice on that.
Yeah, I think it's important, important for us to consider, given the borders and how close we are to other cities, so that's good. So thank you very much, and anything else, anybody? No? All right, so we are going to adjourn now to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is December seventh. Although we do have a possibility, we have a special meeting on the thirtieth that could be open to the public, so we will let you know. Have a wonderful, safe, happy, healthy, fantastic Thanksgiving, and thank you all for attending.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You all.